Thank you for joining us this evening for the April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Montessorino Regular City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house points to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report capable issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise can't be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise can't option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting will be taken by roll call.
I'm delighted to see so many people here this evening. So with that, I am calling the meeting, the regular meeting of the Montessorino City Council, April sixteenth, to order at seven oh four P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and Detective Sergeant Hoyt will lead us, isn't that, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as a whole. Yes.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Turner, Eric, councilmember, uh, Meketso?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman?
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Here.
And Mayor Wohlshammer?
Present.
I'll present, thank you.
First on the agenda is orders of today. Does anybody want to change the order of anyone?
Given the large number of people that are here today, I think we should skip past the consent calendar and, yeah, the possible oral and written communications and goes directly to the public hearing. Is that allowed?
We have a presentation first.
Oh, I'm sorry, after the presentation, yes.
This was given the calendar.
It's fine.
Okay.
So the report's on calendar after the public hearing. Everybody, bring it down. Yes. The orders of the day, announcements, any announcements today? Seeing none, we'll move right on to the presentation. This is the biannual presentation of the Montessorino, Los Gatos, Montessorino Police Service, as I say, uh, covering July through December of twenty twenty-three. Chief, pass on to the meeting.
Thank you for having us again, and yes, this will be covering July through December of twenty twenty-three, but we'll do a recap a little bit of just the, um, since the beginning of the year as well. So again, I'm, uh, Chief Jamie Field, Stellus Montessorino Police Department. Before you this evening is the biannual report out. Our last report out, I believe, was about August of last year. Um, the slides before you, I believe, are also in your council packet as well. So we start with an overview of the department. We are still continuously hiring for both sworn and professional staff. Some of the hires that we had in the past year was an officer, two trainees, and a dispatcher. We are again still hiring for some of those positions as we still have vacancies that are being covered by some of the overtime and per diems that you see accounted for there on the screen. Next slide, please. Think it's important to provide updates with some of the technology and efficiency efforts that are being brought forward to Los Gatos, Montessorino Police Department. That's a column that you see on your left there. Um, specifically, I'll draw your attention to the second item there. It's referencing, uh, particular technology that will be moving towards instead of written citations, we'll be moving towards electronic citations to allow for more efficiency for the end user, uh, for the courts and for our record system. Then last year, we also implemented the perimedium system, which allows us to review and track the concealed weapons permit process that was brought before us with a change in decision, the Bruins decision in July of, uh, twenty twenty-two now. So we're moving forward with that process along with a number of other technology, uh, options there that just allow us to really do our work in a more efficient fashion and, uh, get out there and be able to do some of that, that work with our community that we do enjoy doing. The next column covers some of the, um, some of the grants that we've submitted for. So the state homeland security grant will be expanding some of those funds this year to allow us to purchase some distal gas masks, uh, ballistic helmets, and most importantly, well, all those items are important as well, but a U T V vehicle so that we can access some of the area, um, up in the, the wildland urban interface area that we know that throughout COVID, as our folks got out to, um, get a lot more exercise and they're accessing that area, we also need to be able to access that area more efficiently. And so we'll be purchasing that probably within this year. Um, and then audits, I think it's important to highlight that because over the last three years, we've heard just, you know, a bit of an outcry for legitimacy, accountability, transparency, especially within law enforcement. So at least wanted to show some of the auditing processes that are in place that your department, your police department, um, works with day in and day out. Flock, you'll hear a bit about later on tonight, um, but there's other both state and federal level, um, auditing processes that we are in compliance with and are overseen by the Department of Justice. Next slide. So I think this is, uh, an item of significance. We found that we had about forty thousand pieces of evidence, and it's important to make sure that we audit that evidence, that we're accountable for that evidence. And over the last couple of years, the Parks and Public Works of Towne of Los Gatos has built a new lease, uh, storage building out at our courtyard. And so we work to audit, evaluate, and clear out with, work with the district attorney's office, items that we no longer needed to, to keep. And so we've reduced our footprint and become more aware of some efficiency and auditing processes. And so this is just a picture of the before and after of some of the work that was done there. Next slide. Think wellness is important, um, throughout society, but for, for police and for law enforcement, we can't protect our staff from what they're going to see, but we can certainly provide them tools on, uh, how to, to work through some of those, those moments and, and how they work through, uh, those experiences. So we've implemented integral wellness program over the last six months, and this just highlights some of the areas there. The Wellness Symposium, we hosted at Calvary Church, one of the first public safety countywide, uh, wellness symposiums, uh, in November of last year. The canine therapy dogs, I think everybody in here are familiar with, and you saw out there at the Montessorino picnic last year. So we still, um, use those for our staff and for our community as well. And then, uh, councilmember Alahi, I know that you were at the recognition luncheon this last year. Um, I believe we had that in October, and this coming year, we will have it at the Jewish Community Center on October seventeenth to share some of the stories of community members of how they've supported public safety items and our staff as well. Next slide. So focusing more specifically on Montessorino, this highlights some of the patrol activity, the incidents, and specifically to note just some of the areas over the last, uh, six months that are represented here on the slides. There was a hundred and eight false alarm calls, um, so that was woven in here. You see that there's definitely an increase in July, well, we know that, um, people are home more at that time, and there's more light during the day, there's a lot more activity that's going on, so there's probably a number of standard, um, issues there. And then the other ones do fall in alignment with, uh, the six months represented there in the prior year of twenty twenty-two. So nothing really significant to note there that would be out of character. Next slide. The vehicle collisions, this is representative of, like I said, July through December. Um, specifically, the first couple of them, one is vehicle versus a tree, another one's a vehicle versus a bike with relatively minor injuries. Um, and then the other ones did not involve injury, just a slight, um, uh, impact due to the airbag. But, uh, at least to share some of the, the areas of accidents, um, because traffic safety is always a concern. Right, and next slide. With this slide, I'm going to turn it over to Detective Sergeant Bill Hoyt, as he is our expert on flock, and I know that that is a, an interest to council and a priority, priority that was discussed recently. Um, so he has a depth of knowledge in that area, but he'll highlight a couple of, um, cases to, to point out the value of this system.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor and council, I've gotten the opportunity to meet many of you at, uh, different community meetings that we've had. I know you guys know, and some of the folks here in the audience know that, uh, I could talk for a really long time about flock. I'm a big fan of it, and, uh, and the chief said I only had a couple of minutes, so I'm going to keep it real short for you guys. I am looking forward to some educational sessions down the road as, uh, there's a chance that we move towards some, some ideas within the city of Mont- Montessorino, and I'm at your disposal. What chief wanted me to tell you about, just like the last time I was here, six, we were here six months ago, was a couple of case studies. We are getting one to two to three, what I call wins with flock every week. They're just phenomenal, uh, results that we're getting with our flock system in Los Gatos that also tends to help Montessorino. As, uh, many of you will know, that our investment in flock started, or the idea that came to us, started when the residents of Greenwood Road invested in their own. And so, uh, I wanted to tell you a little bit about, on, uh, February twenty-sixth, one P M, we got an alert from the Greenwood private camera that went to all officers on duty and dispatch that let us know that a stolen vehicle had just driven, uh, past the camera. First it drove past the camera on Highway nine in Quito, and then immediately turned right onto, uh, onto Greenwood. We had officers that started fleeing out that way to try and find it. Uh, they spotted it on Highway nine, and I had, uh, three young men with hooded, uh, sweatshirts on. This is the time of day when burglaries happen, and, uh, Greenwood Road, there's no reason to be heading up there in a stolen vehicle in the middle of the day, uh, especially with hoods over your head. So the officers got behind it, went to initiated a car stop, they took off high rate of speed on the Highway seventeen, and took off out of town. We actually had a witness call in and say that they saw it fleeing past Campbell, uh, uh, Campbell Avenue on seventeen at a high rate of speed. So they went way out of town. That's one of the huge benefits of this system is the ability to proactively, uh, look out for vehicles that we know, either through the stolen vehicle system or in a nationwide database, or through our own local hot list that we can program with known wanted vehicles, or vehicles that we want to contact because of other cases. We're able to get that proactive alert to proactively protect the community to go out and try and find that vehicle. Along those same lines, uh, May thirty-first, we got, uh, notified by one of our commercial partners that, uh, their store had been, uh, burglarized numerous times for high-end Cabernet. I mean, anything strikes to the heart of this community in Montessorino, it's high-end, high-end wine. So they'd been going in and stealing, uh, several hundred dollars in the past, and they let us know about several cases that had happened in our town, and so we programmed the license plate of the vehicle they were using into our hot list with flock. So as you guys know, we have a camera at, at every entrance into the city of, or in, uh, town of Los Gatos, and sure enough, just a couple hours later, it came in, went straight to a, uh, Safeway as we were fleeing to it. They, uh, stole three more bottles, got away, fled just before we got there, and then nine days later, they made the mistake of coming back. We caught them, we were alerted, we went out and, uh, went to all of the local, the retail, uh, wine places in the area where they came in, found them in a parking lot, detained them, found sixteen hundred dollars of the wine in the car. He, uh, uh, placed the gentleman under arrest without getting into too much detail. This was not his foot-first rodeo, and so he is being actively prosecuted for, uh, an, uh, organized retail crime, and that's leading into other investigations. We get wins like this every week, and it's just, it's so fun and so, uh, interesting as a, as an officer that wants to make a difference, to see the ability to make that difference, uh, and, uh, to do that for everybody here just with this technology. So I'm happy to answer any questions, probably not now, but, uh, at future sessions, and please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you for those stories. We'll move on to the next slide. So as we talk about proactive community safety, a lot of that comes with our community outreach engagement and community policing model that Los Gatos, Montessorino Police Department really takes to heart. So we talked about emergency preparedness, um, quite a bit, and one of the ways that we deliver that is through our CERT, and what you see up there, um, in the upper left-hand corner, we have several different volunteer opportunities. CERT being one of them, that stands for Community Emergency Response Team, and Mayor, I know that, that you, um, have gone through the CERT training, as has, uh, Councilmember Turner as well. And I believe that there's now an, not, uh, an I C P here, um, available, which is wonderful. Some emergency preparedness, uh, progress. So, um, anyway, I just also wanted to highlight that there are several CERT, uh, trainings that are coming up. One in Los Altos that actually begins tonight, so that's a twenty-two hour training. Yeah, another one in Campbell beginning August sixth, and another one in Saratoga, and there's more information that's available to, uh, regarding that on the San Marcos County Fire Department, uh, CERT website. Additionally, we do a lot of, um, uh, vacation checks through our volunteers and policing, which is another volunteer opportunity. And during the timeframe that we're representing here this evening, we've actually completed three hundred and eighty-six, uh, vacation checks during that time, which I think is wonderful because we're getting out there, we're assuring that the property, uh, is, is, has integrity of the property and, um, that there's no concerns that need to be reported back to the vacationers and that they know that their property are being checked. And I think it always helps to have a marked vehicle showing up out in front, um, just to show that there is a presence there. Additionally, welcome packets, um, we take welcome packets out to any new homeowners within the community, and during the timeframe represented, there was thirty-four welcome packets that were delivered. The schools, we know that we have Dave's, Dave's Avenue School within, uh, the Montessorino jurisdiction, and our school resource officer also services that school. Um, in addition, we've also added a campus safety cart. Some of you may have seen at the recognition luncheon, that campus safety cart, and there may be one on the final slide, but it's one, it's an electric vehicle that's similar to a side-by-side vehicle. Um, it's actually one of the first ones implemented in the state, and we've had other agencies reach out to us to better understand, um, our knowledge and use of that vehicle, and so far, it's definitely been a win. Neighborhood watch is another area where we definitely engage and offer some of these opportunities and information and just awareness of some of the crime trends that are happening within a particular neighborhood, and we've completed five neighborhood watches within the timeframe, um, and also revisited some of those neighborhoods, um, out of some of the ongoing concerns that they've brought forward. And then Special Olympics is another area, um, that's represented on our, our, um, the brand there, I guess, if you will, how we've imaged our community policing, and it's, it's image there by the torch. But Special Olympics, we have the torch run that comes up June of each year, and we, uh, take off from the Quito Road Fire Station, so we do run through Montessorino. I believe the next one is at the end of June, um, and it's just raising awareness for Special Olympics, raising funds for them as well. And, um, it's definitely a feel-good for our officers to be able to contribute in that way. There's a number of other community policing and partnerships that are up there, but I at least wanted to highlight those. And then finally, just, uh, highlight how we've, we did enjoy the Montessorino picnic. I think it was one of the largest ones that I can remember in, uh, my fifteen years here with this department and our engagement with that, so definitely a success. Um, and we had quite a bit of our staff out there, and we have some pictures on our final slide. And next slide, please. So we are moving forward with an organizational assessment through Meliora Public, uh, Safe, Public Safety Consulting. And this is something that was approved at the beginning of this year, but I think it's just an important item to note because it's about a five-month process where there will be evaluation of facilities, of our documentation, of our processes, of all of our database information over the last three years. There will also be an opportunity for that company to come out and meet with focus groups within our agency, within, um, the community as well. There will be a community meeting, so information will be coming forward because we do want to make sure that we're taking in information from the community. This is one that, this is the first opportunity that we have ever had to do an organizational assessment specifically for the police department. Um, it will be very comprehensive in nature. I've seen samples of this, and it will probably be several, probably a hundred pages in length, but it really takes a look at best practice, and this is done by, uh, individuals that have been chiefs or, um, executives within the law enforcement industry, and I think will really help us with a roadmap for the future of the organization, not just for now, but for five, ten years down the road. And we'll do, um, a very good assessment of our service delivery, of our beach structure, especially with our growing communities that we are recognizing are, are coming in the upcoming years. Next slide. This is that final photo page that I just think, um, really tells a story, some of the story of the, the six months that we're referencing here. The, um, campus safety cart you see down there in the lower right-hand side, that was at our recognition luncheon. Um, that's with the school resource officer that, that gets out there to Dave's Avenue School. Um, you see some photos as well from the Montessorino picnic down there at the bottom with Dart, um, juvenile on one of the, the electric vehicle, or the motorcycles, and then a group photo with our council here before us as well, up there at the top. Um, and then swearing ins for some of the staff that you saw on that first slide as well. So we just wanted to share some of the, those photos. Um, sometimes photos speak a thousand words that we certainly don't have time here tonight, but thank you for allowing us to provide the public safety services to Montessorino. And with that, I'll close the report.
Councilmember, any questions? Councilmember Turner?
I have a question. Um, one of the things that I think we need to move forward with is creating more neighborhood watch groups within Montessorino. We have every street in Montessorino that is a member of the neighborhood watch group. I think it would help in terms of a disaster. Um, and, um, San Mateo County, they actually have, um, neighborhood watch block captains recruiting events. So I think we should hold some of that. When Jackie Rose used to do that in, uh, in twenty twenty-two, that's how we got Greenwood Lane. They paid for their own flock cameras. Uh, Twin Creeks, they paid for their own flock cameras, not that, you know, we're not going to help with, with the future flock cameras, but I think, you know, if we can have that and move towards that, that goal the coming year, it, it would help Montessorino as well and get the, the citizens here more often.
Thank you for promoting the neighborhood watch program because we're definitely, uh, ambassadors of that program, and it is a partnership where we do need the residents to take, take some ownership and bringing everybody together because while we are happy to host it at our emergency operations center and open our doors, there's certainly a value of having it within the street or a cul-de-sac or somebody's driveway. So we're out there immersed in, on that street or in that area as well. So we look forward to any partnerships of interest that want to reach out for a neighborhood watch presentation within the particular community.
Thank you.
Um, I would just like to, uh, compliment and commend Officer Hoyt for his enthusiasm with flock cameras. That is very important to Montessorino as a community, so thank you very much, and your enthusiasm just shines. Thank you.
I, and I also want to, uh, commend the police officers last that you guys do, and I encourage my fellow possible listeners to attend those, there are good events, and shows a lot of what happens there. Give the police a little bit more time to explain everything they're doing, and you can see the people who are really out there in the field helping out.
I know much of the council has been at many of those events, and we appreciate your support at those events as well.
I would like to, uh, compliment you and your entire team on the tremendous job that you're doing. I think the police department is very well-respected in the Montessorino community. That's not the case everywhere in California or in the U S, but definitely here within Montessorino, Los Gatos, that's definitely the case, so thank you for a very good job.
Absolutely. We're very fortunate to be serving the community that we have here, and we do feel that, that it is appreciated. So thank you for the interaction, the, the positive, um, output towards the staff. Thank you.
All right, we will move on with the agenda. But we're going back to the very beginning of the, yeah, agenda, kind of, that's what I thought.
Yes, well, I can't give up a room full of people here without giving an announcement. So, uh, this Saturday, our youth commission is going to be starting off, uh, Earth Week with a bang. We're at two o'clock on Sunday, we're going to be going around the city and picking up trash. You may have seen some of our new, uh, keep our city pretty signs, and we have some stickers. Do you have any out that we could? We have them in the lobby, maybe we'll bring some in and try to get one before you leave, but, uh, if you would like to join us, we're going to be meeting here at two o'clock, and we're going to be going around the city and probably we'll even cross over in the Los Gatos here and there and pick up trash around the city and, and just continue to keep Montessorino the beautiful place that it is, that we all love. And, uh, also, if you do have children from between eighth grade and senior in high school, we are coming up on that time where we're going to be recruiting youth commissioners for the twenty-four, twenty-five season, and we even have some openings now, and they can join the youth commission right now and go right into next year. So thank you very much.
It's Sunday.
This Sunday, Sunday, April twenty-first. All right, thank you very much for letting me go back and do that.
So, um, I guess we're skipping for now oral communications and written communications and going straight into the public hearing, which is item number six on the agenda. Let me talk a little bit about the process of the, the public hearing. We usually start with a staff report, and in this case, uh, city, city planner Perkins will give a staff report on the item under consideration. Then council members will have an opportunity to add questions. And then we will open it up for our public comments, and usually that starts with the applicant giving a, an introduction on the application, and then we'll open it up to anybody who wants to comment and ask questions, uh, of the applicant. And when everybody has said what they wanted to say, we will bring it back to the council and discuss its further here. And then, and this is where the difference comes out with the site and architecture, uh, commission. Site and architecture could make a recommendation to the city council about this. The city council will actually make the decision on this. So we will start with the recommendation of the site and architecture commission. And, uh, Senator Dana Perkins will give us an introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am Dana Perkins, this is Ms. Planner. And this is an application for a new two-story house that is approximately two thousand nine hundred ninety-three square feet in size at one seven two seven two Lake Hall Court. This application was initially heard by the Site and Architectural Commission in December twenty twenty-three. Um, the design proposed at that time complied with the technical setback requirements for the lot, which resulted in a two-story house being located ten feet from the adjacent properties on Parkside Court. As this portion of the proposed house was located adjacent to the rear doors of those properties on Parkside Court, the commission agreed with those residents that the impact of that proposal was significant. The commission discussed possible variance, um, application to the setback requirements for this property due to the unique configuration of the lot. Um, at that meeting, the applicant agreed to redesign their project. Um, the redesign project was heard by the Site and Architectural Commission on April third, and that is the same project that is before you tonight, and it includes a site development permit for the new house, a variance application for the front, side, corner, and rear yard setbacks, as well as a tree removal permit. The redesign project was re, has relocated the house closer to Lake Hall Court and provides a thirty-foot setback from the properties along Parkside Court. Um, this is equivalent to a rear yard setback requirement. Other changes that were made from the original submittal include a reduction in the number of second-floor balconies um, to just one balcony on the second floor, which is about seventy square feet in area and located towards the front of the house. The proposed landscape screening along the property lines has also been increased. Um, this current application includes a variance for the front yard, side corner, and rear yard setbacks. A variance application can only be granted when it is determined that a property has a special circumstance that may include the lot size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. As discussed in the staff report, from this property, it can be unique shape and surroundings. The staff report details the setback variances that are being requested. On the last portion of this application is for a tree removal permit to remove one Japanese maple tree that is located along Lake Hall Court. The location of the tree is close to the proposed construction of the new house, and the application does include five replacement trees that will be planted on site. The Site and Architectural Commission recommended that a The Site and Architectural Commission recommended that the city council approve the site development permit, variance and tree removal permit. With one additional condition that a construction fence with fling fabric be provided. And this condition had been added to the draft resolution attached to the staff report. And staff also recommends approval of the project. It's been included in the staff report and any questions.
Council members, any questions? Right, then we will move into the public comment part of this procedure. I'd like to invite the applicant or a representative of the applicant to go over the application. And please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Tony Spitalary. I'm part of the team tonight to. Support the Architecture Reviews Committee to recommend. The variance and the approval of the project. As you heard that the team went before the committee initially, there was concerns. They recommended that we go back and redesign the project to make it a better fit, fit in the neighborhood and complement the other homes there. The team went back, redesigned it, reshaped it. Moved around on the on the footprint and we think we achieved all the things that the Architectural Review Committee suggested. And when we brought it back and we took their word to heart, we went to work, our team went to work, redesigned it, reached out to the neighbors. Some of their concerns was we worked with them to try to resolve all those issues. And we did, I think ninety-nine percent of that, resolved some of those issues. We know that an important part of that project is the road because it's a private road. And with the use of construction trucks and vehicles over there, we want to make sure that none of that road is damaged. So the applicant, along with its neighbors, will make sure that road stays in good shape during and after the the project. As you heard, we'll put up a construction fence to keep all the dust and debris getting out into the the area. So we think it's a well-designed home. It'll complement all the homes that you have in your lovely city. And we think that the project should be approved and we hope that you would go on with the architect and review committee's recommendation. And I have all the team here, the architects, landscape. You name it, we have it here to answer any of your questions if you have it. And I'm here if you want to ask me any question.
Any questions from the applicant?
How long has the applicant owned the property?
Good question. I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I can answer. Should I come up or?
You can answer your question.
Yeah, we've been.
Direct question.
You should come up. Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Alex. Well, my twin is here. Our daughter is here. So we've been living in this area for over twenty years. We recently moved to Montessorino. We've been living here a little bit over a year. So we love the community and it's been great. And I also want to thank Diana for helping us review because it's like second time around that we're going. So thank you very much. I'm thank the council and all the people here again to support us. Thank you.
So you purchased the property knowing that it's kind of at the top of a hill? And it's an irregular shaped lot?
When we purchased the property, we did not have the full understanding of the zoning regulations and the shape of the property and how it plays out. A lot of that was the learning that we got when we worked through the first phase of the project that Diana spoke to. So in terms of like how irregular the shape was, honestly, what happened is when we designed the first phase of the project, we. Got understanding and education from Diana in terms of all the zoning and we built, sorry, we built the first design to comply with all the regulations as far as we could understand. We got the, at the hearing, we got the recommendation from the Site and Architectural Commission, like I pointed out. That because of the irregularity of the shape and how the determination was made. In, I believe in two thousand eighteen where the front was, that that determination seemed. Rather unique given the shape of the lot. So what we then did is we essentially. Realized that the unique shape of our lot was not the same as all the rest of the lots. And so we went and basically restarted everything to make sure that we would be most, you know. Follow the grade of the street because we are a little bit towards the top, right? And we also wanted to make sure that the new design fully, you know, encompassed the designs that we have on our street. Because we have a mixture of the styles. We have the modern style and we have more of the farm style house on, you know, the other end. So that's really where we understood the uniqueness of the lot. And the recommendation from December was that we come here to seek variance. So that's why we're here, but. I don't know if that answers your question in terms of understanding. A lot of it was learning really over that last year or through, you know, to get over the city and with that.
All right, thank you. Did that answer your question?
That that did answer my question. I will disclose to council that I did go and visit the site today. And walked around. And then went to neighboring streets. So I did not speak to anyone. There were no ex parte communications, but I did go there today.
I need to disclose that I did the same thing. Thank you. That's a habit that took over from my time on site and architectural commission question. I was a commissioner for five years and there's nothing better than just looking at the property and seeing the actual situation rather than a piece of paper.
Yeah, thank you for coming out. I think it's very helpful to see for yourself.
That was very helpful. All right. Council members.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to say that thank you so much for working together with our staff and viserse. And and that really helps the city and it helps the residents around. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Very appreciate it.
All right. At this point, I'd like to invite other people in the audience to use your three minutes to comment on the application. So anybody in in chambers here would like to step up, please. Please introduce yourself and explain where you live relative to the property.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sunil Gupta. I live on one seven three two five Parkside Court, which is right behind the proposed development. I have written a letter to Diana. And documented and requested that that letter be included in the proceedings tonight. I have three very simple comments. One, the height of the proposed property, especially given the variance. Is rather egregious. It is the one, one-story property while it may be within the city ordinance. It is sixteen and a half feet. When inquired at the time we signed the variance. It was deceptively told to us that the height will be exactly the same. As the current property. When inquired again in writing, they sent us the description of the elevation saying. You can see it is the same. It is included in a in a table that the architect and his team sent to us. That's point one. We have made, on that point, we have made a recommendation that height can be sixteen and a half feet. But given that it is going to stare us right in the face as a box. Which is, by the way, this is probably the only property in the city of Montessorino. Which has a box design that reaches sixteen and a half feet for one level, one story piece. Thirty feet for the second story. It is, it is a very boxy design. I disagree with with the previous speaker. That this is in line with the serene environment, the style of homes that Montessorino prides itself into. The second thing is, we requested the architect that. As the property is being constructed, we would like the solar panels. To not face our property because the solar panels will shine right into our bedrooms and into our living spaces. It was mentioned to us that that's okay, but then the architect sent us a a comment saying. You, you have to talk to the city. I reached out to Diana. Diana referred me to the state that that is not a city purview. That is a state. So those are the two things, but I believe the architect has consistently misled us. And had assigned the variance in 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 anticipation of the height being the same as it is. And then the flags went up and that's when we came here and requested this hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers here? Please come forward. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vikram. I'm the neighbor, immediate neighbor, one seven two nine phone map poker. And I have talked to the applicant. We are, we are good friends and we have, we welcome the change. Now, I have only two points that I wanted to highlight from the previous discussions. We came to some conclusions and we have agreed to some of the things. The two points are, first is the driveway entrance exit location. It comes a little too close to our driveway and both the vehicles will have to back up into the cul-de-sac. And we think that is a hazard. So the previous design, wherever the driveway was. Has worked for many years and we would prefer if we could keep the same design in place. When this point was raised, the architect or somebody from the applicant's side mentioned that it is almost the same. Now that's very hand-waving. It's not the same. It has changed. It is not marked where the new. Driveway is going to be as of now, even with the flags up. So we don't know how it's going to pan out. The second concern with this driveway is as the driveway comes closer to our home, our home is. Very glass-based home and we have submitted some pictures of how the lights flash into our bedrooms and. Living room at night, the pictures were shared with Diane. So we we think that if we keep the current driveway design, I think we are okay with that. And the last concern we had about the road, the road that is pretty narrow. Not even two cars can come at at the same time, neck to neck. So we think we need to enter into an agreement between three of the houses that are there on that park code. All of our five utilities run through this that park code. Gas, electric, you name it, silver and others. And if there is a damage, who pays for that because of the heavy machinery? Is our road even capable to handle the heavy machinery? We don't know. What is the survey? We ask cities help to give us some information, how we could get that information that. Can the road even have this much load that it can carry? And then how do we go about setting up that agreement with our neighbor?
I have a comment about about the road. I think that's something that maybe our city attorney can can look at. I'm not, I mean, I'm not really sure that that's a responsibility of the city necessarily.
So it is a private street. The city does not have any responsibility for that. The property owners are able to enter into a street maintenance agreement. There is provision under state law that would assist them with that. That deals with cost maintenance, things like that.
And and the other thing is is the solar. If it's true that the state says this is it, it's pretty hard to buck the state at this point in time. And I can make those those comments again later when we talk about our, some of our environs.
Anybody else in chambers here who would like to speak, address the council? If not, is there anybody online who wants to? Can you please, if you're online and you want to speak, please raise your hand and introduce yourself.
Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening. My name is Michael. I usually reside. At seventeen two fifteen Nakpalk Court in Montessorino. Unfortunately, could not be in person tonight with you. I'm traveling for business. But really wanted to echo the two concerns that Sunil Gupta as well as Vikram have shared. One is the height of the building. That's really. Significant topic, I guess, for my house and my family. Giving the height of the proposed construction. It will significantly reduce the sunlight for our lot as well as our house. So. I really would like you to consider this concern. Subset of the same is the variance. As Dan has mentioned, the variance is lower than, I guess, the California or the state requires for the buildings. To be. I think the requirement is thirty whilst the proposal is sixteen. Certainly not within my comfort zone or indeed my family's. So that's one. Second one is driveway. Appreciate the feedback. This is not cities concern. But we have not been able to address between three of us this concern yet. So I think we'll come back to the city for guidance on how we can address it. Before the construction starts. I really would like us to keep the ambience of the streets and friendly relationship between three of us. Before, during and after the construction completes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else online who wishes to address?
Can I ask them the question?
Sure, go ahead.
Are you still online?
Michael?
Yes, I'm here.
I was there on site today looking at the story poles. And I saw the tree in the background and the. If that tree was not there, then, or sorry, let me, let me ask you the question. Do you get shade from that tree right now?
There are four trees, Brian. There are the, those are the red oaks trees. I think you're referring, are you referring to the first house on Nakpalk Court? Because that's where I reside. And we have the four red oaks, which is on the border between us and Sunil Gupta, who is in the room. They cause a little bit of shade, but equally, we are delighted to have the four red dogs in our backyard.
I'm talking about the the large tree that's to the west of the of the property.
Are you referring to the oak tree that is on on a border to between Alex and Vikram?
Yes, I believe that's the case. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Well, yeah, so that's not necessarily my concern. It's totally on a different side of the house. So probably the question to Vikram and the neighbor who is behind Alex on the other side next to Sunil Gupta.
Okay. Thank you.
There anybody else online who wishes to address the council?
No, the hands are raised.
No hands are raised. I'll ask the audience here one more time. Is there anybody here in chambers who wants to address the council? If you, yeah, applicant, please go ahead if you want.
Process is the applicant free class?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Charles Chang. I'm one of the designers from the architect team. I want to, so I do have a photo from the oak tree that with the shadow. May I pass it around? So that, I think that's one of your questions from.
That was your question. Yeah, maybe if you just pass it around. What what is the?
So, yeah, so the shadow was saying that that tougher. Most of his current house and actually very near to his window. Okay. And while you guys looking at this. For the house, Vikram, that he have a question regarding the driveway. I think in the last meeting, we do have another photo comparison with the existing condition. So the existing condition is. So the existing condition is pretty wide. And now we just um minimize it. But the location where it end, it do the same. So we believe, we believe, um, uh, I think the first thing is, uh, the property owner, I think he uh did, because the private road is so narrow. So if, if they back out from the narrow road, it's more uh unsafe. But now it's more into the uh, for the set, which much wider space. So uh, we believe it's much more safer than what they have before. And then uh, I think to answer Selen at back, I think uh we have two meeting with uh Selen. Uh, I think the first meeting that we have for painless, uh focusing on the variants in the landscape. And at the end of the meeting, we talk about the height. So we do have a email work sending uh the height issue. But we understand that uh homeowner is not professional. It's not like architect or structural engineer. Sometimes it's difficult to understand. So the story pool is very important. And I love that the city require that. So all the uh neighbors can virtually see what happened. I think that's it.
Thank you. There are anybody else in council? In the chambers?
I may, I just want, I didn't know your process. I don't know if the applicant gets the last word. But I just want to address some of the points that were brought up uh by some of the, the people speaking tonight. One, uh, considering the uh, the light, I believe the light plane is, is okay for this property the way it, it's set up, the light plane. So I don't see too much disruption uh in, in the light sunlight. Uh, as far as the, the road construction, uh, we, we had mentioned at the last meeting that heavy trucks or stuff that are needed will be parked on down below outside the, the property on the street. There is enough room on the property for smaller uh units to work on that they'll use and enclose in in the uh green fence around that. So we're really being very cautious about how that road is being treated during, during construction. Uh, as far as lights in neighbors' homes, uh, that does happen in, in, in anywhere. If you're pulling out of a driveway, your light might flash into someone's home, but it's not a constant light of. I can think of a, an event where the school uh where I lived, um uh, they wanted to put a new driveway in and the demonstration of the lights continue light into the neighbor's house was continually. So it was a problem. Here it's just typical, a few minutes of backing in, out at night that the light may hit someone's home. So it's not a constant issue or a constant problem. And I think the other issues addressed as far as the height was already addressed by the architect. And uh, we think uh, and uh very positive that we addressed all the issues that the architect review committee want to make this property fit well into the city of Montessorino. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll ask the question one more time. Uh, sure, go ahead.
If I may.
One more time. We're a little bit limited with time.
One last comment.
If you have something to say that hasn't been said or.
I have made a specific recommendation based on the current architecture of the, the city of Montessorino that the height can remain but can be sloped. I've tried to reach the architect. I've tried to reach the owners multiple times through text messages and emails. No response. Uh, this, this deception continues and we are very concerned that there is no accountability on part of the owner or the architect. Uh, they have not introduced us to the contractor and this project is going to go skidding with no accountability on part of anyone. And we're going to have uh basically uh everyone on their uh, their doorsteps every day calling police or calling other uh activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, looks like we wrapped up the public comment. We will uh bring it back to council. Council members, any discussion for the questions? I imagine that I could go first. Uh, this is a two-story house?
Yes.
Are there the two-story houses in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Or probably.
Um, the other two houses on Nakpal Court are both two stories as well as the houses on adjacent properties on Rockside.
And uh, on the variance, uh, the thirty-foot variance for the height on the second story?
Double check. So for um so the, the technical front yard of the lot is the portion that's on the cul-de-sac, the curve of Nakpal Court. And so that um is requesting instead of twenty-five feet at the first floor, twenty feet is, is the request. And then the requirement would be thirty feet for the second floor and the request is also twenty feet. And then um the the side corner, which is along the straight portion of Nakpal Court, um, instead of fifteen and a half feet at the first floor setback and twenty feet at the second, the request is seven and a half feet for both. And then the rear yard, which is adjacent to um the property at the corner of Nakpal Court and Winchester, um, would normally require thirty-foot setbacks for the first and second floor and that is requesting sixteen foot. And the reason for the variances at those three sides is in order to provide an increased setback um on what is technically the interior side, which is adjacent to the properties at Parkside, rather than um or required six-foot and ten-foot setback. The um proposal is for thirty feet on those sides, on that side.
That property variance, I guess.
Correct, but in order to achieve a thirty-foot setback on that side, the increased setback, which was the direction provided from the site in Architectural Commission at the December meeting is what um the other variance requests resulted from.
And that increases required to both the neighbors or just the way the bodies?
Um, because of the impact um to, to the properties um along Parkside. Um, even though technically for this lot, um, that is technically considered the I'm sorry, the technical front yard is along the cul-de-sac of Nakpal and the straight portion of Nakpal is technically a side corner. But sort of the way the property situates um and relative to the other lots, it seems that the straight part of Nakpal really is the front yard. And so this is sort of trying to align with that better.
And also if you could answer the couple of consults that were brought by the neighbors from John and the, I believe, and uh yeah, it's asked to take a few more.
Yes, so for um the driveway, as noted by the applicant, the um, the driveway is actually proposed to be narrowed from what it currently um is, that the current access to the driveway is, is pretty wide. Um, the portion that will be closest to the neighboring property, the location of that driveway access from what it currently is does not change. Um, but the reduction in the width of the driveway will require the cars to enter the driveway more from the cul-de-sac portion of Nakpal rather than sort of the corner, the transition between the straight portion and the cul-de-sac. And then on this, over by the city attorney, then maintenance and impacts to the private street of Nakpal Court is, is a private matter between the property owners.
Is, is there a fire issue? Fire truck is getting in and out?
You know, the um entire length and width of Nakpal Court is an emergency vehicle access. So there is an easement for emergency vehicles over Nakpal Court.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if, if I may use, if I may use the phrase bone of contention that I've heard tonight was the height of that building at sixteen and a half feet. Have you discussed this with the owner as well as the residents who have, who are making their remarks about it till?
So the, the comments were raised um at the Site Architectural Commission meeting. Um, the sixteen and a half foot height. So one second, let me finish this. Um, is proposed at the one-story portion um of the property. Sorry, the one-story portion of the house which faces the first property along Nakpal Court. Um, and that does have I'm sorry, just looking at one. So that does have a setback from that side of sixteen feet. Um, the, the required rear yard there is thirty feet. If that were a side yard, which again is sort of more how the proposal is angled, the setback would be six feet.
So is, is there, the required time sixteen feet or sixteen and a half? I thought it was sixteen.
The required.
Right.
The maximum height allowed for a one-story portion is twenty-one feet.
Oh, okay.
I have a number of, of comments. Um, first of all, I, I'm pleased that the neighbors want to be peaceful uh and live together on the court. So um, I think that's a good thing. Uh, I believe that a lot of people come to the city of Montessorino because they want to build the house of their dreams. And I admire that. I think we should welcome those people. In terms of a variance, uh, I believe that the city of Montessorino is very reticent to have variances. I, I look to our founder that said basically you should minimize the number of variances. Um, and when I look at the odd-shaped lot, I ask the question, did, you know, did you buy the lot? Have you owned it for a number of years or did you just buy it recently? And it strikes me that if you buy a property, buy an airport, then you complain about the planes. Then it's like you knew it when you bought the property. So that troubles me about the variance. And the height of the building, it's at the very crest of the hill. I believe it, it goes down to the neighbors, to the, to the west and then obviously the other sides. Um, and relative to the large tree that's there on the west side, I don't think the house, I think the house looks somewhat proportional in that. But if that tree was gone, I can't imagine what it would look like, particularly with the balconies that are there. You know, you'd be looking all around. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking that if, if the tree was to, to stay there, then I could see uh allowing the variances of package um with the height. And my final comment, I'm wondering uh if there could be any screening uh that would help with the, with the uh headlights. And I, I appreciate that you can only, it's not like, as, as the architect said, it's not like it's a building where there's people going in and out all the time. You'd have a few people, a few times, um, car trips in, in an evening. Um, but I, I am troubled that if that large oak tree was not there, then I think the house would look disproportionate relative to the lot and the variances that are requested. But I, but I could, I'll repeat myself and say, I can make a finding. Um, it provided that the tree was there that we, that we allowed this.
Any comments?
Okay. Uh, I would like to make a comment also. I think the Site and Architectural Commission has made a real efforts to look at this in a lot of detail. And I think as a result of that, the design was completely redone. The house has, has been reversed, has been moved uh to the front of the property. So I think the owner and the architect have gone through great lengths to address most of the issues. Now, is it perfect? Um, no, the perfect situation would be if there was no house. That would be the best for the neighbors. But there will be a house and I think everybody should have the freedom to build the house they want within the limits that are set by the city. And uh the architects and the, the owner went through the, the right procedures and everything was addressed. There are some things that cannot be fixed. For example, the issue with the lights. Any house that is situations situated in a corner will face that issue. I have it in my house and somebody comes down the street, they shine bright into my living room. That happens to every, each and every house that's situated in a corner and there's not much you can do about that. So um, other than that, I am in favor of allowing the, the entire package as is. And at this point, I would be looking for a, for a motion.
I, I still have one more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, there's some issue brought about damages or about the trucks and everything that's ever come up there. So is the homeowner applicant willing to pay for any damage to repair the roads? And that may be caused by the trucks and everything else that comes up there? One more question for you guys to see. Cause it's a private road. We can't pay for it, so you have to make sure that the neighbors.
If the road is damaged by, if the road is damaged by the contractor that is hired by the company, yes, we would definitely be responsible for that. Um, I'll ask the question, maybe it's of the applicant, not of the architect. Uh, would you uh be willing to have a commitment to, to keep that tree there for a minimum of say ten years or fifteen years?
We don't have a. But that's. Yeah, we are actually planning to remove the tree right now. The tree that we're talking about removing is on the other side.
But I, I understand that. It's just that one tree there. In, in my opinion, it, it doesn't make the house look as big, but if that tree was removed for whatever reason, then it would, it would make it very different.
Yeah, no, I, I think I totally understand. I don't know like how we make a commitment, but like we have no plans today to remove the tree. So um, we're not really looking to remove it. We like the tree. The tree, as you maybe saw in picture, it's actually quite big. It's nice. So there is no plan.
There is no plan to remove the tree. I mean, unless by uh, a, a, a natural, you know, disease by the tree that it has to come out because it's dead or something like that. There was no plan to remove the trees.
Well, since this is a large tree, it is protected by the fact that the owner would need a permit to remove it.
Exactly.
Right.
And, and also it just looks like you're adding six more trees along the back property line to go along with that tree, correct?
Yes.
Okay, which will do further screening to the folks behind the, behind the property.
Alright, I'll just follow. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What is your motion?
That the approved. This property, so the building of this property.
So the site development permit, we actually have a resolution. That would be.
Approving the site development permit of variance.
So it'd be a resolution of the city council, the city of Montessorino approving a site development permit of variance and a tree removal permit two zero two three dash three zero five nine for the property located at one seven two seven two Nakpal Court. APN four zero nine three four dash zero five two.
That one.
That one.
One second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call for this?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachuk?
Aye.
Councilmember Alahi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Leon Turner?
Yes. Motion carries five to your honor. And move. We'll take a short recess to give the public opportunity to leave if you want. But I recommend you stay because there is a lot more interesting to talk about, you gentlemen.
You think it's important? I mean, it's very. Calling the meeting of the city council back to order. Um, I'm hoping to propose to change uh in order. Business again, and due to item number eight first. Which is a consideration of options for the community of these type of projects. We'll move that up and deal with that as our next item on business. So.
I I I approve that. I was gonna say I concur with that.
Okay, does anybody have an issue with that? No? All right, thank you.
Oh, we can both walk right up. That's right.
So what we have before us is consideration of options for the community of some of the projects. Including award of contract to S and H Construction, putting along Serena more of a cycle project. And there is a staff report on this. Please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and the council members. Um. Tonight, we're here for the consideration of adoption of a community center project, including an award of the contract. And any other options that you want to look at or discuss tonight as far as a multiple um option that are included in the this tonight. The background here is a fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget included an allocation of one point two million dollars. For the conversion of the annex buildings to community space plus an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for green water infrastructure. That's not included in this bid tonight. The work to be performed under this contract generally consists of interior building remodeling, building expansion. An installation of solar panels and battery storage. Detailed project plans are included in this report as attachment one. The construction bid documents require time for construction completion is two hundred and seventy calendar days. Following the award of the contract and the issuance of the city's notice to proceed. In order to provide a facility in the project's scope and cost, staff solicited bids for the remodel and alternative items for the fireplace, the chimney, the shower, the bike hold doors. EV vehicle charging relocation and including a voltage plan. City staff invited the sealed bidding in accordance with the requirements under the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Public Contract Code sections uh twenty-two zero fifty. On March eighth, twenty twenty-four, staff advertised the project to the Los Gatos Weekly Times. Trade journals as required by the state and the city's website with a bid opening date of April fifth this month, twenty twenty-four. Two addenda were issued for this bid on March twenty-second and on April first, twenty twenty-four. The city received four complete and sealed bids on the scheduled bid opening time on April fifth. For the Monteversta, uh, Monte Serena Community Center project. A summary of the bid results are shown below. We categorized the four bids that were submitted that day. The lowest bid was S and H Construction. At one point six six eight million. The second lowest bid was Walker Construction Builders at one point nine four two. Uh, Messiah Construction uh was at one point nine six two, very close to the second bid. And the fourth bid was well above all the others at three point two seven four million. Staff has reviewed the apparent low bidder's proposal and bid documents and has determined that the bid submitted by S and H Construction Inc. Is responsive and that S and H Construction Inc. is a responsible bidder. The engineer's estimate that we had for the base bit of this and all the alternatives is one point five million dollars. The total bid amount. The base bid plus the alternatives of the lowest bid by S and H Construction included is one point seven eight eight million. Which is almost twenty percent above our original engineer's estimate and well above the one point two million dollar budget that the city has for the project. Um, with the next table you will see below in the staff report is the base bid of S and H Construction at one point six six eight million. And the five add alternatives below there, as you'll see totaling the one point seven eight eight six hundred uh total that we have for the overall bid. Uh, there are a few items on there that we thought we could maybe postpone to a a further construction schedule. One being the alternative shower, which is not essential for the operation of the community center. Alternative four was the relocation of the EV charger, which we could incorporate with the future parking lot improvement if the council so desired. Staff will pursue the pursue the green stormwater infrastructure project heading the direction of the project tonight. This project does conform to the CECL, the California Environmental Quality Act. The fiscal impacts that we're going to talk about tonight includes the city council approved budget, I'm referring again to the twenty twenty-three twenty-four approved budget. Which includes five hundred two thousand dollars from the general fund reserves. A hundred eighty thousand dollars from the Prop sixty-eight grant, eighteen thousand dollars from the SBCE grant, and an additional five hundred thousand dollars. From the SBCE decarbonization grant program. These funds totaled to the one point two million dollar budget that council had approved previously. If the contract is awarded to S and H Construction tonight, additional funds will need to be identified for this project by council. There are multiple alternatives that staff's bringing before you tonight. The first one will be awarding a construction contract to the base bid only in the amount of one point six eight eight six hundred and billion and approved. Potential contract changes in an aggregate amount, not exceeding not exceeding ten percent, which is typical. Of the contract amount of award for a total of one point eight three five four hundred and sixty. Um, the second alternative would be to award a construction contract for the base bid and a combination of bid alternatives summarized below. There's a matrix that you'll see in your staff report that shows all the five uh bid alternatives. You can add any one of those that you may want to as council and direct us to implement that within the contract or not. Our third alternative we bring before you tonight is rejecting all the bids and directing staff to value another plan set and rebid for the opportunity of a lower base bid. The fourth alternative we have tonight is rebid the original project plan set, which council has previously rejected. And the fifth alternative would be to just reject all bids at this time. The conclusion is various combinations may be approved with the multiple alternatives. All options will require. An increase in general fund allocation to finance and scope the approved uh scope approved by council. Staff is available to answer any questions that council may have tonight.
Council members, any questions? Please limit yourselves to questions at this point. We'll have discussions later.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Uh, I I have a serious concern about the notice I was given in this case. To, you said there was a notice published on March eighth. Uh, on the on the websites and on the city papers and on the builders place. Then there's another one published on March twenty-two. Uh, what was the change between the March twenty-two date and the March eighth date?
In March twenty-two, it was an addenda that was submitted. Yeah. Answering questions, one was being a class A or class B license that was allowed. And we clarified that.
Okay, so basically it just had to do with, the original notice said you required a class A on March eighth.
Right.
So only class A contractors could apply for this.
Correct.
Then on March twenty-two, you clarified that class B would be okay.
That's correct.
You answered that question by sending responses to who?
We posted that response to the website where the plans were held and also to all of the um construction sites that were. Um, holding the bids for all the contractors.
But it was not posted in the newspaper.
No, we're not ready for you to do that.
I I I think there's a requirement to publish it or.
Only the original bid set, sir.
All right, so April first, you did another amendment?
We did.
What was that amendment?
Um, that was a multitude of of minor questions throughout the um. The project. There must have been fifteen small questions of how we interpreted certain things throughout the project. At that point, not only did we post them again on the city website and the all the journals that were unfolding in plan sets, we also had a list at that point of all the people who had. Asked questions, who had came to the walkthrough, so we had a list of bidders and their email addresses, all the contacts, so we sent everything out via contact. Everybody would contact us up to that point.
I appreciate that, but that actually just gave people four days, right? With particularly for fit.
That's correct, and that's exactly what the uh bid documents have stated. They had that last week before the bid for a final question, and that's typical.
All right, so my concern is uh you're saying an amended notice. Does not require to be re-norised and published in newspapers, but I think it would depend on the kind of notice you're getting, of course.
No.
People who have.
After a previous city committee on that, that's.
I don't ask her, but my, let me express the concern. Which is, when you ask for an A license, you have different class of contractors bidding, and A-class people are mostly building bridges and bigger projects. But if you say I want a B license, you open it up to a wider crowd to submit bids.
Yes.
So that was not done because people who may not have been done, because some people would, and I know all the people who bid also have B licenses. And I don't know if the bid after they asked you the question on March twenty-two or had they submitted the bid before that.
We will not know that. I'll visit on the same day.
You know, or you open them up the same day, you can't tell what we can submit in. All right, yeah, so my concern is the people with the B licenses who would normally charge you less. May not have bid out there, so that's that's my thing. And as far as notices required, I was looking at the court section, says you need to do a two-week notice by publication. Maybe there's something that says you can amend it, but depends on what the kind of amendment it is.
Yeah, so the the amendments are typically in response to questions that have been raised by the contractors, and so it's. Standard practice that you wouldn't need to publish that. You just provide them on where all the documents are located.
But this is not that kind of amendment. This has to do with whether they get an A license or a B license. I would think it would be less publication.
Okay. Um. Mister Jordan, uh. When did you publish the answers to the questions that were asked?
We're into a staff report tonight. So that's. Here we go. Two addendums were issued on March twenty-second and April first.
What was the last day to ask questions?
It was the Friday prior, so they were submitted on April first. I think that was Monday. It was the Friday prior.
One night.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, so, but people got the answers to their questions on the first of April. After the deadline to submit additional questions.
At the end of the previous week on Friday, yes.
Right.
End of this day.
Um. Just. To be, wow, and that that's, I'll I'll make a comment on that later. This is time for questions.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Um, the city has been working on this community center for some time now. And at the last meeting that we had, I asked some questions and um. It had to do with how much money have we spent so far on this community center? Let me let me go through each one of them. Ripping out the insides of the old building. Architects to expand the building. Designers to review the renovations inside the building. How much have we sunk into this so far? Because if we're looking at one point two, we need to figure out one point two less the money that we've already spent. And where do those funds come from?
I do have the number on the amount of professional services spent thus far on this project, and it's. Almost forty thousand dollars in designer fees.
Can you ask um? Can you ask Mister Summer Alas to, to come up with those numbers for? For how much we've spent so far and how much we can spend based on, on our.
Yes, I don't have the demolition numbers for you tonight, but I only have the design expenses for you tonight.
Can you give us a, could, could you give us the design expenses?
Designer forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand?
Forty thousand.
And then could you give us later on how much it would cost to rip, rip it out and, and architects to expand the building that you paid so far?
We have paid forty thousand thus far today. We paid forty thousand up to date so far for the design of the building.
What about ripping out the building?
Demolition I don't have for you. I can find that for you, yes.
Right, any further questions? Councilmember Turner?
Uh, yeah, I do. I asked you also at the last meeting if we could get a bid, for example, on a metal roof with standard solar panels. Rather than Tesla solar, solar panels to reduce the price of, of other construction. I also asked for less expensive batteries, the alternative to the Tesla power wall. I also asked you to look at whether less expensive sheet rock and installation alternatives should be used. Have you incorporated any of that in this bid?
We did not specify which type of solar or batteries to be used so that the contractors could give us their best bid. So that was incorporated. As far as the sheet rock, I do not recall that we asked for a specific. Sheet rock on that. I do have a contractor tonight that could ask. I'm not sure if he recalls either, but typically you will not. Designate a specific name or company name of an item because we're not supposed to do that.
I'm not asking for a specific name. I'm asking for a less expensive sheet rock, right? And it could be anybody's sheet rock. But I think one of the things where we need to look at, if we're going to look at how much are we going to spend for the building? Is what are, what are the things that we can add and bring in to make our cost? Alright.
Help me with this.
Costs. So I think that's really important. Anybody, when you build a house. I would love to have a house with, with everything in it. But if you have a limited budget, then you have to make a list of things that. You can take in and out. So I'd like for us to do that if you could, please.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome, great. No questions? I have a question, a few questions. As far as I can tell, landscaping is not included in the bid.
You're correct, sir, yes.
As far as I can tell. Fixing the area in between the two buildings is not included in the.
The concrete walkway was included, not to the extent of it.
Okay, but there was some repairs will be needed there. Because that area where there's clearly a drive-through will have to change.
Right, that's going to get shrunk down and then the concrete walkway will be. Okay.
Have any of the contractors who visited the building. Commented on the termite damage that is, at least to me, was very apparent in the building.
It was not in the questions on any of the addendums that I responded to.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
What happened to the plan to finance the rest of this project through donations? Have anything come?
We have five thousand, two hundred dollars in donations thus far.
How much?
Five thousand, five, yeah, I believe it's five thousand, two hundred dollars in donations thus far.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, council member? In that case, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody in the audience here who would like to comment on this project, please.
Counsel.
Please introduce yourself.
My name's Steve Masay, President of Masay Construction. We've been living, have been in town here and working and living for the last twenty-five years. Beginning the last nine months, we've completed five custom home projects in Monta Serena. We did bid this project. When we approached it, it was kind of a passion project. We live and work five minutes from here. We bid it at pretty much at cost. We have a commercial residential company and we also have. A residential company for custom homes and speculative construction. I will say to answer council's question over here. You know, when you, this project right here, it's, it's a million and a half dollar scope of work, plus or minus. You know, it's just, that's where it was an engineer's estimate was. To find contractors who can bond and find contractors who can build at prevailing wage, which is project requires. It's a tweener. You're not going to find, the class A is a special engineering license for a very specialized project. So you're going to get mainly all class B contractors in here bidding it. But you're not going to find contractors who do a lot of prevailing wage work or bond work. With robust subcontractors. Just because it's hard to find single-family guys at this small of a scope to come in and do, to bond the job, pay prevailing wage. It gets really tricky with, with a million dollar scope of work. I'm basically here just to say that we're still volunteering. We're looking at this as a. Passion project for our town here. I live here, I work here. And if you guys want to value engineer the project, we'd be happy to donate resources to help, you know, look at that. Or do whatever, you know, council or staff needs to help out, kind of like pro bono. So that's pretty much why I was here, to speak on it and just kind of shed some light on the challenges for. A lot of companies who do bond work and new prevailing wage work to come in and bid this project. Because there's certified payrolls, there's some complexity to not just the construction, but the back of the house. Insurance compliance, prevailing wages, again, bonding, and so. That's, that's all I have to say.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you bid for the project at that time, the notice said A contractor.
Mm-hmm.
Did you find out that B was fine before you bid or you just?
No, we just horrified it. It was a question we horrified.
Sorry?
We sent out a request for information. It was on our list.
You want to respond back?
Yeah.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, then that's when you can read it after that.
Uh, we just kept bidding. I knew there was going to be all Bs bidding it. A is, I think that might have been a typo or something like that.
Thank you. Thank you for your commitment to help us.
Yep.
Alright, is there anybody else in the chambers here? Mister Allen? No need to introduce yourself.
Well, I think that I have the same view of fiscal responsibility as councilmember Turner. Which is. We have a one point two million dollar budget. And I, I'd like to see the city try to get some bids within that, I think. We, I know we had a bid back in twenty-one for that and there's been some inflation since then. But when you, with all the add-ons, this thing is running closer to one point nine million and there's some things that, you know, are not included. And my experience is, is that with change orders, things always run more, not less. And I would respectfully ask that we, well, one of my heroes was John Foster Dulles. Most people on the council aren't old enough to know that he was Eisenhower's Secretary of State, but John Foster Dulles said. Sometimes in life you need a quote agonizing reappraisal, close quote. And I would respectfully ask the council to do that and see if we could get a bid for our new community center posted at one point two million dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody else in chambers here? Ms. Lawler?
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. I'm Liz Lawler. I live on Blanchard Drive. I'm a former mayor and council member, as you know. First of all, I want to say that I a hundred percent support renovating the annex building for a community center. Back in September twenty twenty-one, when I was on council, we discussed a bid on the original project. That came in at seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and we as council unanimously decided that was too expensive and that we could not manage. However, now city council is here considering a project that's more than double. The cost of the last one. In fact, this project, a project that's looking like it's going to cost close to one point nine million dollars. Putting us well over the budget at one point two and putting us into debt seven hundred thousand dollars. Honestly, I would rather see that money be used to build sidewalks along the dangerous Dave's S curve. Something that we discussed at the Better Streets Commission just last week and I am chair of that commission. What started as a renovation of a building to serve the needs of our community as a place to gather in the event of an emergency. A cooling center, a warming center, a place to charge your devices and socially a place to meet for book clubs and the like. Has somehow morphed into what appears to be a vanity project. One of the things that makes our city so special is the fact that our city is small and it provides anonymity and the privacy for our residents. A showcase community center that draws outside attention seems to be out of character. As council members, it is your fiduciary duty to safeguard our tax dollars. And to do your due diligence in researching all possible cost options for this community center. Therefore, I am in Camp Allen. I respectfully ask that council table the current bid. And direct staff to accept bids for the original project for comparison. And staff has indicated that bidding the original project is no problem whatsoever. Once armed with all information, council should be able to make a transparent and well-informed decision on behalf of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers still wish to address the council? Can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, council. I'm Lisa Shannon. I live on Rose Avenue. I just want to basically repeat what the other two speakers said. I'm very concerned about the costs of this project. I'm not hearing ways to pay for this project. That's going to be hundreds of thousands beyond the budget. My understanding is that the five hundred thousand dollar grant is still at risk because we're not going to meet the deadline for that grant. So again, my understanding is that that's not a given, that we even have that five hundred thousand. That's part of the one point two million budget. And I also agree that I think this project is larger than what Monta Serena needs or wants. And we should keep it to what the original intention was as a meeting place for the residents. You know, please keep, keep our finances and your fiduciary responsibility at the top of mind as you're considering this. And I also agree that we should go back to the original plan that was less costly. And get bids on that so that the council has all of the information in front of them as they're making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Since I don't believe there's anybody else.
One, sorry, one more thing to add. You know, a design-build approach might be, go a long ways too. So if you guys set a budget and then get with your architect and consultants. And kind of back into the price from design is an approach as well that can possibly keep you on, on budget.
Thank you. If anybody online who wants to address council?
If you want to raise.
If there's anybody online who wants to speak, please raise your virtual hand.
Yeah, Angel.
Still nobody?
No, it's still.
Alright, in that case, we'll bring it back to council. I mean, who wants to start?
Can you put up my slides, please? Zoom in, please. Because no one has a copy of this. Okay, so this is the process from staff receiving open bids. It's a responsive, do a level set. I'm not sure the level set was done. Analyze the bids. What are the features and the cost? Not sure that was done. Recommend alternatives to city council. That was done. So that just brings us up to where we are. Next slide, please. This is what Mister Jordan just went through. The high-end D-Mate to three point two, seven. Messiah, one point nine, six. Walker, one point nine, four. And those two numbers are pretty close together, twenty thousand off. And then the low bid, S and H Construction, one point six, nine. Next slide, please. So I think we need to think this through from a financial analysis and this is what's required, I think. And again, you see it that, oh, can you scroll down just a little bit more, please? It should say for illustration purposes only. Okay. So I think our reserves are unrestricted reserves around four point five million. In FY twenty twenty-five, so June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we'll probably have around four point two million. Our expenses will be three point nine. So our, it says projected reserves, our increase in reserves would be point three. So before the community center, we'd be around four point eight. If we put in the community center at one point seven million, less the grant from SBCE. There's our net cost of one point two. So take the four point eight, less one point two, we're at three point six million. I think that our economic reserves are to be around three point five million. And before we go forward, I think we need to know these numbers, not me just, you know, putting them up. Rather, you know, what are the actual numbers? So that's why it says illustration purposes only, but I don't think we want to get too close to our three point five million. Next slide, please.
If I could, when I was, if I could just. Pardon me? I mean, I have a reserve number based on the thing that was submitted as well. It says the total all fund reserve is at six point, two, six point one, nine, five million.
Right, once our general fund is one point four, where's our?
I can't tell from there.
Yeah.
But, so we've got more than that.
Okay, so the process should be, is it feasible to rebid the project? And analyze the bids, the features and the cost. I think this gets back to what several people in the audience said and also councilmember Turner. And identify what are the must-have versus the nice-to-have features? Like, is it, you know, what do we need to do? And that's what's typically is called value engineering and looking for opportunities there. And then say, is it feasible, you know, maybe there's no, maybe there are no. Nice-to-have features, in which case it may not be feasible to rebid the project. And if we do decide to rebid it, then what's the timeline and process to rebuild it? And I rebid it and I think it should be rather than twenty-eight days, the statutory minimum, which I believe is fourteen days. But I could be wrong. Next slide, please. So on the agenda, it, it said there is two alternatives. One is accept the recommended bid or reject all the bids. Go to the, go to the next slide, please. But I think there's a third alternative and I believe Mister Jordan outlined that in the back in his report. But it wasn't kind of upfront and center on the agenda. And basically the first two rows are the same, but we value engineer, look at what the features and finishes are. Rebid the project with the lower-cost features, receive the bids and make a decision there. Go to the next slide, please. So this is again for illustration purposes only. At the left-hand side, this is conceptual. That's what, what it came in at. And the low bid was one, six, seven, or whatever the number was. And then I think there may be a couple of larger features that you could take out. And then all of a sudden you start to get into smaller numbers. So that you're not going to get there. There's no single way to reduce the cost. It's going to be, you know. Forty thousand here, twenty thousand there, and you know, you're going to have to reduce it in a, in a number of different areas. And I'll just give you a couple of examples and maybe we, we can, we can have our. And, and I'll just give you a couple of examples and maybe we, we can, we can have uh, uh, our uh, Steve Masai talk about this. But there's some, a feature in the, in the uh, in the ceiling that is for noise reduction. And I, I believe that's adding maybe sixty, seventy thousand dollars to the cost. You look at, at, in the, in the restroom and, you know, does the tile have to go all the way to the ceiling? Or does it all, it can it be, you know, not as high? Again, uh, let's look for ways to, to value engineer to reduce the cost. So over at the right-hand side, can you move here so I can read the slide? Oh, it says, uh, value engineer the features and finishes by having the architect work with staff to identify nice-to-have versus must-have elements. Then bet the opportunities with the community center committee and report the results back to city council with financial projections. Right? It's like, here's the feasibility of doing it. If approved by council, then issue a new request for bid, new request for bids. And to, to council member Alahi's uh, uh, point, you know, make sure it goes into the newspaper saying A and B or just B contractors. Uh, next slide, please. I think this is my last one. Potential funding. I spoke with Valley Water about their Small Cities Partnership and I think there's at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, but they want to be able to, to show people from outside the area. Here's what gray water is. Here's how you can reduce your water consumption. Here's different features. And I believe there's a hundred and fifty thousand at least there. Um, community donations, someone mentioned that. We've got fifty-two hundred dollars, but I think we could ask people in, in town if they knew that we're, we needed to, we want to go ahead with this and it's, and it's going to be of value to the community. And then the third line is donations in kind. And I think if you look at the, at the uh appliances and other uh, costs that are in there, I believe that we can get some of those uh, in donations in kind. Granted, we'll have to pay for the installation of those using preferred wage, but at least we're not, you know, I think there's, we can get a heavily discounted uh, uh appliances and other things. So there's north of three hundred thousand dollars. So even if you got the three hundred thousand, um, you know, there's, it will help where our reserves would be. Uh, and I think this is my left slide. So those are kind of my comments and thoughts. So to summarize, I would support rejecting all the bids today and then having staff work with our architect to identify what the nice-to-haves are versus the must-haves and then put it out for rebid. And I believe that the four bidders on it are familiar enough with the project that they would be able to rebid it very quickly. And I would invite comments from uh, Steve on this, but.
I'm sure council members have comments also.
I'll take a shot here. So let me just close it. I don't need to read any of this now. I agree with council member Meckin chuck. I vote for option five and uh, I think we start over again on this. So I'll make a short and sweet. Because if, if we're going to get another crack at this, let's, let's do it. Let's do it right. This is going to be something we're doing for the city for the next fifty to one, to a hundred years and let's just do it right and make sure that we're not going below the back line.
So mine may be short, but maybe not sweet. So, so I want you to give us the numbers I've been asking for, right? How much have we spent so much, so far with the project? The building demolition, the design work for market tax, the consulting with structural engineers. Also, at the last meeting, I asked you to give us your plan for monthly operating cost of this building, right? Are we going to open it for seven days a week? Because that's going to go into our reserves. What are the estimated salaries and overtime to have fifty people come in here and watch, you know, cooking classes, right? And, and, and have, have an event here. What are the janitorial services and utilities and office supplies that we'll need? What are the additional insurance and liability costs that we're going to have to manage? What are the special services that we're going to have for the disabled and for seniors? Because if you talk to Saratoga, that is one of their highest costs is when seniors and disabled come to the building and there's an emergency, they have to be able to fund that. How do we operate a warming center for an unhoused, for the unhoused, right? Or for those without homes? And lastly, the furniture for the center. Of all of these expenses, you know, my kid, like I said to you, my kid were going to school and ask them, what are all your expenses? If I'm going to send you to USC versus UC Berkeley, which is right here. I need, we need to know all of those things. So if you could give us those expenses, then it would, it would help us as well. It's a complete story. You need to give us a complete story.
I'll just ask a little more direction from the entire council. Typically, we don't do an operational evaluation at a construction level. But if that's something that you collectively want to direct staff as to do, please let me know what your differences.
It should be, I agree, it should be part of the overall consideration. I understand it's not included in the bidding process. It doesn't belong there, but it should be part of the overall consideration of how we're going forward.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I know it's complicated and we kind of keep going back and forth and have been going for the last five years. And I guess you're on the trend of doing it again for the next five years. My view of this is we're going to build a community center that's going to be for our next generation. We need to do a good job. Spend a little bit more money, don't be found, you know, penny wise and found foolish. Because what it costs to build it now is going to be less than what it costs to do it in ten years. So we have an option. If you have a decent center, it doesn't have to be an extra, a vacant center, but at least a decent center that serves all the purposes that it needs to serve. We had at one time approved one point two million budget and then we got another five hundred thousand from the city, uh, from, from the city. So in a sense, we are, we are at one point seven anyway. It's based on that budget. The other thing is.
No, that's not true. The budget was six hundred thousand and the half a million turned up to one point two. So that's a major, major point.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
In any case, the results have gone up. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at total off-funds available as of February twenty twenty-four. It's six point two million and I think that unrestricted reserves are ninety-nine thousand and restricted reserves are fifty-five thousand. So we don't have that much, or I'm sorry, correction. Under the whole budget, the unrestricted, the restricted reserves are a hundred eighty-six thousand. So we have about six million dollars now compared to what we had before with about five million. And, and the way profit taxes are going up, we will have more reserves. We're in the money. You're not losing money. The city is getting, and, and part of the job of the city is to provide services. So if you're providing services for people coming in and getting served and seniors and you're providing them a space or whatever, that's what cities do. That's what our job is to provide services to our community members. And uh, I'm, I'm looking at doing it in a decent way. We could have a little A U build up and be done with it. But when you have that money and it's just sitting in the bank, fortunately, you're getting some interest on it where you weren't before. There's no sense in just having it sit like it's not going to hatch more chickens. We need to build something with it. Let's, you know, for a few hundred thousand dollars, we can get something that's decent and it's going to last a while. That's good. So my thought is here, we do need to set up this bid because I, I really get stuck up with notices. Notices are not done right. Uh, there's a question, there may have been one person out there with a B license who might have come in and didn't get a chance to bid because he saw an A license and decided it wasn't for me. Or since everybody else's B license applied anyways, so these guys know what they're doing. It may not make a difference, but I think that needs to be done. So I would do the B, B notices, uh, make it clear and, and an amendment really, if there's a small question answered, that's fine. But if you really have a notice issue, that's a serious issue. Any court would look at it very seriously. Uh, I, I once had argued a motion where they served me on a Saturday and they were supposed to serve me on a Monday and it was off because it's Saturday is a Sabbath, it's a holiday. So that was that. But you have to give those notices properly. Look at value engineering. You, you, maybe take advantage of Masai here to see what he can figure out so we can get it as close to the budget as possible. But I think I would also urge you guys to look at it as a long-term project that we want to leave something behind. And we have enough money. So it isn't like we're, our pension is funded, everything else is taken care of. So we have enough funds. You're saving money for the heck of having more money in the pocket. It really doesn't help, I guess, because you require to provide services for our community.
May I add something else to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, one of the things we really haven't done is we have not gone out to our residents to take a survey on what they think about spending what she calls a vanity building and I call a lavish building. Okay? And I think we need to do that and I, we need a legitimate survey, not from next door. But I want our, our city planner to, to say, yes, the names here are transparent. They are actually residents of Monty Sereno. And I think we need to do that. We had a whole bunch of people here tonight. They didn't care about how much we're spending. They just left. That's one example, right? So we need to let people here know what, what we're doing. We're spending their money.
All right, thank you. Um, well, if I may make a comment, I usually wait until everybody is set there saying, and I give my comment. That's just the way I kind of use it operating. Um, I'm solidly in the uh, rejecting all bids side of the equation here. I think the one point nine, slightly over one point nine million dollars is way beyond our budget. We have one point two million dollars available and I think spending another seven hundred twenty thousand dollars for something that we really have not defined very well. Um, we never went through, what do we actually need? We spoke a lot about what would we like, what, what, what would look nice, but we haven't talked about what we actually need. But this is absolute minimum that we need. And I think we can simplify the design by quite a bit, bring it back to more reasonable numbers and uh, hopefully a bid that will be much lower. I, I want to comment on what uh, council member Turner said. I spoke to quite a few neighbors in the last couple of months about another subject, but I also brought out the community center. To my big surprise, a lot of them had not even heard about it. They don't know. They didn't know this is going on. It was a brilliant surprise to me because we've had many meetings here. We've invited people to join the, the committee and they didn't know about it, which was shocking to me. So I'm all in favor of doing a, a survey. And a survey should start with, do we need a community center? Previous surveys were formulated. What do you want in the community center? And I think that starts from the wrong point. But do we need a community center? I, I think we do. And if, if we do, what are, what are the minimum requirements? What are we trying to achieve here? So I think uh, it should not be a showcase for um, efficient energy use, efficient water use. I agree with what the former mayor Lawler said there. It should be what the residents of Monty Sereno need. So at this point, I would like to facilitate a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we reject all bids and that we direct staff to uh, work with our architect to value engineer this and, and come back to council uh, two weeks from now at our, at our next meeting and, and rec, and identify what the possible uh, implications are of that value engineering so that we know if it's feasible to go ahead with the existing plan. And also to include a financial forecast of where our reserves will be at the, at, you know, at the completion of the project.
I'd like to second that, but wanted to see if the motioner would take a friendly amendment. And that would be to also include a report where we would specify what our goals with this building are. What do we want to do with it? Do we want to have book clubs? Do we want to have boy scout meetings? Do we want to have weddings, so on and so forth? And also to take a poll to find one hundred people in the city, find out what they want.
May I respond to that before accepting or rejecting your motion or your friendly amendment?
Yeah.
There was an extent, there were two surveys that were done. The first one was done by our Eagle Scout candidate. And the second one, uh, I was the author of that. The second one was a comprehensive survey and that landed at the community center committee. And the community center committee, we changed our chair and our vice chair. And I was, uh, I'm no longer the chair of that. And it was on the agenda to approve that survey, the findings, and then bring it forward to council. And that's never been done. And so that exists today, but it hasn't been, quote, approved by the community center committee. And I'm not sure if, if, if we could distribute that or if it has to be approved and I would, I would ask council that. Um, but it's very clear what the potential uses are. And in, in fact, I'll say one other thing, and this is an example that came up just the other day with the group that is protesting the uh, water rate hikes proposed by San Jose Water Company. We have no place to meet. Wouldn't it be great to be able to meet in a community center on a Sunday versus trying to do a Zoom meeting? You know, anyways, that's just an idea. So that's my.
So did you take the amendment or not?
And the amendment is to.
Is to include all of that information. Make sure if, if it needs to be updated, we should update it. And let's find one hundred people that live in the city and ask them what their feelings are about the community center today.
Sure, I will accept that friendly amendment.
I have a problem with just a hundred people. I mean, that's not enough.
That's a hundred votes. That's, that's ten percent of the votes in Monty Sereno.
We need to know because everybody, all our residents.
I'm just saying, wait, I, I'm just saying, we can find a hundred people. If you would like to find more, please go out and find more.
I, I think that our goal should be more than a hundred people because we're going to ask people later on to, to take out their money if we're short, if anything happens. We have unforeseen circumstances that we don't know about.
They're taking out their money. Let's, let's, let's not set the limit at one hundred.
I just put a hundred. You can make it as many as you want.
Yeah.
But a minimum, a minimum of a hundred.
Minimum of a hundred. I agree.
Okay. Uh, according to order, uh, Mr. Allen, public comment has been.
I know. Is it possible to reopen public comment?
Sorry. Uh, so I want to ask uh, council, do we need a motion for it? Is, or is this direction to staff?
So we, we can take the direction, um, which would be working with the architect, redesigning, coming back at the alternatives uh, or the new design, including financial forecast of reserves at the end of the project. The um, a list of what the building should be used for and a poll of at least a hundred people. We got that direction. We do need a specific motion though to reject all bids.
Okay.
And operating costs.
She said that.
Did you say that?
So, no, that was not part of the motion.
Okay, last, I'll take the motion. So now this is for operating costs.
Yeah, it should probably be, uh, include operating costs, what's been expended to date and then going forward and also include burn. Yes, sure.
All right, so we need a specific motion to reject all bids. So it only comes out of that second. Do we need a, yeah, we need a. Oh, oh, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment.
I, I think we do have a fiduciary responsibility not to keep a place open like that for five years and keep dragging it out and dragging it out. So it's not used and it just sits there. You know, it's a source that can be used for the community and we're not doing that. So the fiduciary responsibility is not as government's money we spend. It's also making sure that resources we have was properly used and utilized. We've gone through polling. We've gone through this for the last five years. We know where the city is. There's people, a couple of people who have opposed it. But the rest of the city is okay. So I don't necessarily want to, I mean, I appreciate finding out more about what the people want. I think we're just wasting too much time on it. We need to move on. One will learn, there will be something.
We'll oversee it as uh, expeditiously as possible.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
So did somebody make the motion to reject all bids? Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Lahey?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
You're some, yes, I, I can, there's some.
Yeah, Councilmember Turner. Uh, Councilmember Rebecca Chuk?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wilshenner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, am I asking one more question for clarification for staff? As we take the scalpel to this, can you give us a target of what you're looking for financially? What, what do you want us to land as far as costs?
1.2 million.
1.2, okay.
Now, 1.2 was with $700,000 for the grant, so we were really saying 500. There's probably going to be, no?
No, just.
I'm just saying, suppose we.
I don't think that we can say, here's what the number is that the scalpel has to get to. I think we rely on, on Mr. Colesat and his team and staff and to get input to say, what are the nice to haves versus the must haves? And only include the must haves, but if the must haves to get to Councilmember Lahey's point, you know, let's, let's get that rebid again, and then we can make a decision and deal with the fiduciary responsibilities, not letting the building stay idle, you know? And, 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 you know, not let it go on forever. Because if, if we say that the number, the, the 169 could come down to 1, 4, 5, or like whatever the number is, when you, when you cut out the, the nice to haves, then we can make an informed decision. So I would prefer not to say, here's what your bobby is, here's what your target is.
But, okay, but having said that, there is, we have a budget that we need to live with, and we can change that. Or we can vote to change that, but, yes. Yes, thank you.
But so what I like is we can get it for 1.2 with the value still there, and then we're okay with it.
May I, may I make a quick, uh, on a, I think we have a list of all the residents in Montezarino, correct? So we can send them for the survey, the survey, right? And then we also can publish this on peaceful monitoring, right? Who's, who's in charge of peace? Yeah, yes. Yes, thank you.
Yes, there are, there are ways to do a survey, and hopefully reach 100 people or 200 people.
The more, the better.
Yeah, I think we all agree. Alright, um, that's that for this item on the agenda. No, we're going all the way back. We want to take a great decision, because we're taking all the areas, have power through, and then we'll take a reset.
Yeah, let's do it after.
Yeah, and we've only got one more item left.
Are you taking a break, Mr. Mayor, or?
Right through.
No, we're going.
Power, we're gonna power through, power through.
In light of this discussion, we were just talking about hardly having a community center moved tomorrow.
Yeah.
We are.
We are.
Do you have that?
Okay.
With thanks to the city.
Alright, um. So first, quickly, through some of the, I guess on the agenda, or, you know, the presentation. Is there anybody who wants to address the council on any subject that is not on the agenda? Seeing that there are nobody in the chambers, is there anybody online who wish, with, anything that is not on the agenda?
No, he has a raise.
No, as always.
I, I, it's not on the agenda, but those are in communications submitted by overfill a lot.
Yes.
We suggested we do a community in our project, if we're gonna do it right, so I would have it in January, Barbara Gussel, then also. Maybe go that way. Well, I wish he'd come here next time to expose you.
Alright. Uh, British Communications, uh, we have received several British Communications about the community center, anything else?
The only ones you received were the ones that were submitted to, and they're on the website.
Consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second. Um, I will.
Sorry, we do need to open it.
Uh, you gotta open it.
I think.
No, no, I'm gonna recuse myself of, uh, items.
Three and four.
Three and four.
Should we group two and five first?
Or recuse or abstain from voting?
Ab, abstain, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting.
Would you like to then group items two and five, and then we'll take three and four?
Oh, I'll move, yes, I'll move that we include two and five.
Okay. Items two and five.
Second.
Is there anybody who wants to comment, uh, public comments? Is there anybody who wishes to comment on items two and five on the consent calendar? No, we have none either, okay. Is there a motion to approve items two and five from the consent calendar?
He just moved, I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, it's premature, but.
All in favor, inside. Items number three and four on the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve three and four?
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstain.
Abstain.
Yep. Okay. Have a consent calendar, we've done public hearings. Um, the next, we stick with the order, the next item is number seven, which is discuss and provide direction to staff to adopt a possible rebate program for the removal of hazardous trees. City Planner Perkins has a report on that.
Yes, I'm here with the, and again, um, at the February 20th, on the city council meeting, the council reviewed the tree preservation ordinance to ensure that dangerous trees can easily be removed from private property. This issue was one of the city council's strategic goals for fiscal year 2023, 2024. While the current permitting process was found to not be a hindrance for property owners who want to remove dangerous trees, the city council considered additional options to further encourage the removal of trees that present a fire hazard. The city council directed staff to provide information about a potential rebate program to partially compensate property owners for removing trees that are considered a fire hazard. Um, the staff report, um, contains some parameters that will need to be determined by council in order to establish such a program. Um, the first consideration is the funding of the program. Um, this would include the overall annual funding amount, as well as the maximum rebate for, um, that each property would be eligible for. Um, for a comparison, the city of Saratoga has, um, a similar, um, tree removal program, and they set the maximum rebate per property of $1,000. On the second consideration is the species of trees that would qualify for a rebate. On the staff report lists the trees that Montezarino Municipal Code currently considers as unsuitable for various reasons. Of these species, the eucalyptus, black acacia, tree of heaven, palm trees, and monterey pines are on the list of unsuitable species due to potential fire hazards. Um, and those may be the species that, that council would want to consider for this rebate program. Um, the third consideration would be if the rebate program would apply to properties in the wildland urban interface zone only, or throughout the entire city. And lastly, um, if the rebate program would apply to trees that are of a size that would require a true removal permit. So that would be a tree of 25 inches in circumference, that is, uh, which had measured four feet above grade. Or if council would like to extend the rebate program to smaller trees. Um, this completes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Is, did, um, do any of our neighboring cities set a limit to how many people can apply for a rebate?
So the city of Saratoga is the only, um, city that, that I was able to find that has this type of a rebate program. Um, they work through the San Diego County Fire Safety Council, um, to administer the program. And speaking with the Fire Safety Council staff, um, they do a wide range of services for the city of Saratoga, so there isn't a specific annual budget for the tree rebate. Um, because it falls under an umbrella of, of a number of other programs, um, that they contract with the Fire Safety Council for. But they do have a maximum of $1,000 per parcel for eligibility.
Would the fire department be willing to extend that management to us?
Yes, so in speaking with them, um, if council authorizes, um, the program to move forward, staff would work with the Fire Safety Council to, to help with the rebate process.
And would people apply through the San Diego County Fire Department or through the city?
So they would re, apply for their true removal permit from the city, and then we would refer them to the Fire Safety Council for the rebate process.
Okay, and with all rebates, best way to say this, can we ensure that they get their rebate? There's so many rebates that tend to find some loophole that not pay out. And I find that to be just very aggravating.
Yes, we can certainly make the processes, um, clear and minimally complicated as possible.
Yeah, thank you.
So there's also a permit tree if you left a page in the wood trees. Would that still apply to these, or are you recommending we get a new permit?
So the, the species that are considered undesirable, um, in the municipal code is, um, a tree removal permit that's reviewed by staff, and there is no fee for that application.
You listed, uh, six under the unsuitable category, but in the table you have listed like seven, so I'm not sure.
So there are a couple of trees that are, in the municipal code, is unsuitable. Um, the tulip tree, the privet, and fruit trees are not on the list because they're fire hazards. So those are not trees, those are unsuitable trees, but they're not.
Fire.
Fire, particular fire hazards.
So these six that you listed here, uh, so if you go just to one tree, five, those are fire hazards?
Correct.
So should we focus on fire hazards particularly, rather than unsuitable? Because it can get pretty expensive to remove these trees.
Yes.
And I, I guess the question is that we should be, are you suggesting we have a bu, proposed budget for how much we can spend on these, or how many trees do you think that will come up in this? Probably, and we have a topic on, maybe we need to do a poll to find out, so, how many are there?
Um, let me just double check really quick. Um, I think the last staff reported in February, I estimate, of the number of trees, permit, permits that we have issued. So for, on the years 2022 to 2023, um, there were at least 20 permits approved for removal of trees that were an unsuitable species. So average 10 a year, based on this two years.
So those 20 years, you have 20 houses, or 10 houses, or five houses?
I don't know.
Then I could kind of actually pull it from there, based on the 24 houses, we have 3,400 houses we have. So it's probably at least one tree per house, that'd be 3,400, I think. Like a budget of a thousand dollars, that'd be 34 minutes. That's a trade fire with 240,000.
Any other questions?
There were two families objecting to this, were there concerns of breath?
We, we didn't have to.
No.
And it, um, I received, um, this.
So the money for the rebates, is that coming from the city, or is that coming from San Diego County Fire Department?
From the city.
From the city, but the fire department is managing this program. Now, didn't the fire department also have a program for $1,000?
They do, they do not have their own independent.
They don't have their own, okay. They just offer to manage it for, for the people. Okay? And the estimated cost of a 50-foot eucalyptus tree, two and a half feet diameter, I don't know what that is in circumference, currently running about $6,000 or $7,000, right?
Or even more, yeah.
Sure. 18 to 20,000?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah. About a single tree. I'm just saying, because I think my neighbor removed like three or four, and they cost her like 12,000. But I, I just wanted to just get a movement.
What was it, 2,000 or 35,000? Were you doing the streets?
Alright, I heard, I heard about 6,000 a tree.
I think a lot of it depends on where the tree is located, if it's in your backyard, it's more difficult. There's stuff underneath the tree, it's hiding over a pole, it's all about.
But if, if they have to use a boom truck and cut pieces off, lower each of those pieces.
There's huge variation.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, because will $1,000 move the needle to get more trees down? That's, I was just curious, just what the council thought of that.
But if we, um, I'd, I'd like to make some comments, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, let's, let's see if there are any more questions first.
No more questions.
No more questions, then I have to ask, is there anybody, there, I'm in chambers, obviously. Is anybody online who wishes to comment on this item?
No, I have no ones.
No, I have so is, okay. You're free to comment now.
Alright, um. I think that this is a good thing to do, to offer to our residents. Um, I don't know what the take up is gonna be on it, but, uh, we won't know until we try. But I, I commend staff for following up on this, and, um, I, it'd be a real bad pun to say this is a hot topic, but, um, it could be this summer. Um, so I, I would be supporting what essentially staff is recommending. We can put an upper limit on it, uh, for say, $10,000 in the, in the fiscal year ended, uh, June 30th, 2024, and then 20,000 or some number in the fiscal year ended 2025. And if staff could come back and, and let us know what the uptake is, if any, then we could, you know, sort of throttle it up or throttle it down. Um, but I, I do think in terms of what our residents are concerned about, fire safety is near the top of the list, and as soon as the rains go away and it gets really dry and windy, then it becomes more top line.
Yeah, I fully support it, actually, the number that you just mentioned, or exactly the number, so I just fancy to propose, great minds think alike, so there is a free permit, uh, $1,000 rebate per household, maximum of one per parcel per column per fiscal year. And then $10,000 this year, $20,000 next year. What does everybody think about that?
Do we have to make a decision tonight?
That would be great, just, well, we're just giving direction, I think.
Yeah, can we just start flying with the trees?
More direction, the better, then, because we can come back with, yeah.
I would, okay, my, my quick comment on that is, if we have a chance to get rid of eucalyptus trees and there's a property that has lots of eucalyptus trees, I say we give them up to five.
I could support that.
Yes.
Because that would mean that they have a pretty significant grove, and groves are so much more deadlier than individual trees.
But how would you formulate, uh?
Well, I mean, you would be able to see them, I mean.
Okay. So if, you, if, if there are five or 10 on the property, we would subsidize five of them, or? Yes.
Eucalyptus only?
I'm, I'm more for eucalyptus than anything else.
The bounties on the eucalyptus.
Yeah.
I, I think, I guess that's the question I had. Is, is eucalyptus the worst fire danger tree, or is there another one? That, would you know?
Um, I wasn't really able to find any information about the severity, um, of, of the trees, um, of the different trees in terms of fire hazard. Um, however, I do believe it probably a lot has to do with how, how each tree is maintained by the individual property, I understand.
Not only for a fire hazard, but for them falling over. When I drive around after a storm, the main thing I see on the ground are eucalyptus branches and eucalyptus trees.
So can we, should we ask staff to come up with a formulation, or some kind of formula? You know, there are multiple, multiple eucalyptus trees on a, on a property. Would they be willing to extend the offer?
And now the part is, either a thousand dollars is a magic number or it's five hundred dollars a magic number. And then give you more trees to download them. You say five thousand for five hundred, you get ten trees. Thousands for five hundred, you get five trees. You know, where where does that number fit in and I'm come up with the right number? But somebody that five hundred might report that if there's five trees, they're five hundred if they're. Others may not matter.
And and then one last piece of information that might be helpful is uh to see if Saratoga feels that this program is encouraging more trees to be removed. Although they've, if you've asked them that, that you're curious to hear their response.
Also, the city of San San Mateo, the county of San Mateo has been dealing with huge eucalyptus trees um in neighbors' yards and also in city yards, in bigger than ours.
Yeah, it's it's a problem that's going on everywhere in California. Seemed like such a great idea fifty years ago, hundreds years ago, but it wasn't.
Yeah, but our our residents generally have money, so it's just a question of giving them a little incentive to go do something. Right, they'll say, okay, now we got five hundred bucks, that's good.
And my my thinking is, and sorry I interrupted you.
Go ahead, go for it.
Um you know, you have to move the needle a little bit, you gotta have something to get people off the diamond. And if they do have, if they do have, you know, six or more trees and they want to take five out, then, you know, five thousand dollars moves the needle because, you know, on on six trees. If if they take five of the six out, you know, five hundred dollars, does that move the needle to take out a uh eight thousand dollar, you know, cost? Not really. You know, thousand, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the rich people.
Yeah, but there's there's still, we, there are still some people that have been living here for over thirty five years, and they were in council earlier today.
I think what this program will do also is raise awareness. Just by announcing this program, people will actually think about it more.
And do we want to, we talked about funding it through twenty twenty five, do we want to just make it a two-year program and reevaluate at the end of two years?
Something like that, yeah.
Or a year and a half program, right?
Right.
So June thirtieth twenty twenty five.
Can we schedule this for another meeting? I have to go on. I have a sister who's almost dying.
Yeah, I think I think we've given direction.
Okay, the staff have sufficient direction for this item?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Next on the agenda is item number nine, also the direction regarding proposed bylaws for cities.
We defer this to the next.
Yes, but I can make it really quick.
Okay.
Yeah, so um as everybody knows, the um Cities Association was previously an unincorporated organization and um the members of that group voted to join a JPA, including City of Montesquio in November of twenty twenty three. And part of that involves um adopting bylaws. So what's in front of you tonight are the proposed, the the latest version of the proposed bylaws um that they're working on. It basically, they took the bylaws from the unincorporated um organization and they've modified it to meet the requirements of JPA. So all they're asking is if we have any feedback on what they're proposing, if we have any concerns. I have had a few conversations with the attorney who's working on them and raised some issues that we're clarifying in terms of timing and dates and things like that. Um but the overall structure is very similar to what was had previously and consistent with um what you typically see with the JPA. So tonight is just to take some feedback and pass it on to Cities Association.
Uh previously, there was a possible financial liability that was created through the unincorporated. Is is that, is that uh has that been addressed through the incorporation of the JPA?
Yes, so the JPA is a separate legal entity would be responsible.
Okay.
And there is a funding requirement by the member agencies, but there's an agreement that that amount won't change for a period of time. And um there's notification, things like that.
And I I'm sorry, I didn't see if there's, if they establish these.
They're not established yet.
Okay.
They will be, and the the um point of exposure in the unincorporated organization was employees. And as structured, they will have independent contractors serving as the executive director and the um authority counsel.
Okay, that was my question also on fees.
Yeah, and and I can also answer, but uh there was a budget that was approved in the last meeting. And the fee that Monchi is going to be paying is the same as they're paying in another little thing, just six thousand, six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. So there we go, and uh Saturday's to pay is fifty one thousand dollars.
You you know, I've been I've been witness both the Cities Association and the California League of Cities for three years. And and, you know, I'm glad we have this bylaws and I'm glad we're we're starting to look at some of their their responsibilities. Because many times, what happens is at at meetings, we give them our points of views. For example, S B nine and S B ten, we kept telling them these are not good laws and they kept ignoring us and ignoring us until the very end. And when it passed, it was too late. When they changed their mind and they said, yes, you guys are right, it was too late. And and now what you're seeing is um several cities leaving, right? Uh the the Huntington Beach, Orange and Newport Beach. And the one of the other reasons they're leaving is Proposition One. And and this league, for example, supports Proposition One, the cities are saying, no, don't don't support it. And and all that kind of stuff. And I'm glad to see this this bylaws in there, but the problem is, how do we monitor it and how do we help them to stay on track with what the cities want?
So this is just the um cities in Santa Clara County, and we have a representative on the board. And um one of the questions was about how, when they take positions on legislation, things like that, how do they deal with maybe differing opinions on that? And so when they do take positions, they, in the bylaws, it's required that any um thing that is submitted, make it clear on which city's behalf the letter is being submitted. So if we were again, Montesquio was against some legislation um that City of San Jose wanted. Anything that comes from the Cities Association in support of that would indicate that the cit- the following member cities are in support. And so if we were not in support, we would not be included in that.
Yeah, and that was a problem all the time, a small city. They never even discussed some of our problems, they just discuss some of the problems of the bigger cities. So I'm I'm hoping that this will help them change.
I I keep waiting for the League of Small Californian Cities to be telling.
You want to start?
Yeah, I I think that's the wonderful idea, I thought I brought that up. The badly classified area that has changed, because I, you can, I'm there. There's no small cities on the Cities Association than big cities. I mean, San Jose only has one vote. San Diego is another big city that's on board, but there is Los Angeles and uh Saratoga and, you know, us. There's more small cities now on the Cities Association. But we have more weight than the big cities, because everybody just has one vote. Unlike some other uh organizations where they have more votes like the MTA or MTA or whatever, then it's BTA.
And that's why Gilroy and Santa Cruz dropped off.
No, not.
The the airport, the airport. We never discussed.
Yeah, yes, the airport thing is gone, but at least in the Cities Association, we have as much weight as anybody else. I have a reduced resolution where six of the small cities work with me and four are vote against. So I think we're gonna be okay. And uh and and the good thing is, we only take six thousand five against. About one vote, San Jose is paying fifty five thousand for one vote, so we're really ahead of the game on this thing.
Yeah.
Alright. Is that enough direction?
Yeah, it sounds like no specific feedback.
Specific things about the uh.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Committee Commission reports, um. Let's see if we can uh go through this fairly quickly. Councilmember.
Nothing to report.
I'll start it off.
Councilmember Ryan, nothing at all. Councilmember Turner. The court, uh the councilmember.
Uh West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority is meeting next week. We're gonna be looking at probably around a nineteen point one percent increase in our uh uh collection costs. Uh S B C E is attending the Cal C C Inc. conference to today and over the next couple of days in downtown San San Jose. There's over seven hundred attendees there, and it starts at seven thirty tomorrow, and I'm gonna be there. Uh BTA is gonna meet next month. And West Valley Clean Water Authority is gonna meet in approximately two weeks.
Alright, thank you. And I want to report a little bit about the um Valley Water Commission meeting we had last week. Um actually, I asked uh please to attach the presentation that was given to the to the minutes here, to the agenda. It uh it was a good meeting, actually, unlike some of the previous meetings. And the bottom line is that um the wholesale water rates will increase twelve point nine percent in the coming fiscal year. They lowered the increase from fourteen point five. Uh after our last meeting, there was quite a bit of pressure on the board to see if they could lower the number, and it's been lowered from fourteen point five to twelve point nine. But remember, this is the wholesale level. San Jose Water buys water from Valley Water, and then they have their own increases as well.
Oh, I was I was gonna say, any water costs from Valley Water are one hundred percent pass through.
Yes.
So that is separate than than San Jose Water companies charging.
Sort of bottom line, and they add their own increases on top of it. Um there's some interesting, if you want to read the whole presentation, some interesting uh facts on very expensive projects that they have to do over the next couple of decades. And it's really shocking, it's it's in the billions, billions of dollars. And they're required, so has to be funded somehow. Anyway, that was my report. Um councilmember comments? No comment?
I I one quick comment slash question, especially since we have the the council law or the whatever legal law is on for the Silicon Valley Solid Waste or West Valley. Is there no longer a single collection day? And it's now been broken up into three separate collection days that you have to call for?
Under the new contract, I believe that's correct.
When, does that start this year?
It started um March first of twenty twenty four.
Okay, because I don't think a lot of people know that. It may be something worthwhile to tell our residents before you start getting a lot of calls saying, hey, how come there's no pick-up day scheduled yet? Because I understand it's not even posted on the West Valley um recycling website, but that word has gotten out.
I'll respond to that because I met with the director and the assistant director of West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority today in advance of the board meeting next week. And that item is front and center on their radar screen, but that's something that West Valley Collection and Recycling is supposed to do.
Right.
And that's on their radar.
Yeah, I was saying, maybe we should post it on on next week through the city's account or something like that. Because we are coming up on that date within eight weeks.
I was not aware of that.
I I have a comment as well.
Sure.
Um I'd like to compliment the Lasgotten on the great article on Monte Serino's A D U program. And in particular, um Sean Luthold uh was uh complimented uh by the Lasgotten, so uh I think that's very good press for our residents and for our uh A D U program.
Good point. Um, let's see, future agenda items, does anybody want to add anything to a future agenda? Well, in that case, we will now reset to a closed session. Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Government, Section five four nine five six point nine.
Take a one-minute break?
Can I just, can I just make a call? Would she? I was gonna ask if you wanted to just. Um for anybody interested in.
Before your recess.
Before recess. Any of the comments for this item?
Sure.
Would you like to open the phone? Well, seeing that there's no hand raised.
Uh is there anybody online who wants to comment on agenda item number eleven? Existing litigation government, government calls section five four nine five six point nine?
No hand raised.
Oh, no, no comment? Right, in that case, we will reset to closed session. Yeah, comment and close.
I have had one person. I remember, I'm sorry, I remember one person commenting.